September 3rd, 2019, work session. Silence, shut off your cell phones, and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we all survived the cheer of the Labor Day weekend, what a wonderful weekend it was in Lake County. We do have some additions to the agenda. We have, I'll just let Melanie go over them. Melanie, you want to go over the additions we have?
Yes, we have an MOU with Lake District Wellness and Recovery Center with Lake County District Attorney's Office. Ken Kessler will be here later, and he's asking me to designate representatives to class, the class board of directors. And we have an MOU from Jake here, Lake County Community Justice and Climate County Sheriff's Office.
Okay, and so, looking at our agenda, Francine Winters is not here yet, so...
But I see someone who's ready.
Are you presenting for Francine?
No, no, no.
She's right after Francine, at 9:30.
Okay, so, both those items are timed, so Kathy, in case other people are coming, I'd like to wait till the timed part of it.
No problem.
Let's go on down the agenda, just remember today's a work session. Our decisions are usually made tomorrow. MOU, Lake District Wellness and Recovery Center with Lake County District Attorney's Office, ratification, so we do have that to probably take care of today, being the ratification. Melanie, was anybody coming down for that or anything?
Yeah, but she knew I had two presentations, so she wasn't planning on coming down.
Okay, so we'd like to hold that off for just a little while.
If you want...
We're doing normal government work, we're delaying everything. Okay, so we'll go down the next one. Jake, MOU, Lake Community Justice and Climate Sheriff, and we'll do the, they're both on their Are both of those the same, or are those different? I see as addition.
Yes, it is an addition. I got it done Wednesday or Thursday, but I missed Melanie, and I wanted to show it at their door and have a walk into it, so I sent an email. So yes, I just got to do this one. So before you is an MOU between Community Justice and Climate County Sheriff's Office. It's for one year. We've been doing this as long as I've been here. I'm going to visit for two bed days, or two bed, two jail beds during 65 days a year, so we have 730 bed days. We can have up to three inmates over in Climate County Jail. I don't dictate, although the agreement's between myself and the sheriff's office, I don't dictate who goes over there. Listen, it has probably a second paragraph that talks about myself or my designate. My designate is Paul Hubble, so he handles who goes over that way. Either him or Sergeant Polberg. It's worked out well. We have two folks utilizing our beds right now. We've never not utilized our beds. That's what we, how we pay for those is with our Senate bill of $45, which are those folks who were sentenced to prison, both months or less, through the Climate County jails. So those are the folks we intend to move over there. We, the sheriff's office, was over there. So they're not clogging up a bed for six or eight months here.
Well, it's been a tool over the years that just, Mark could probably speak to it more than me. Working in the jail is whenever we have the population, and sometimes it's family and other family in jail, or it's females or others, it's been a great tool over the years, so.
It's been good, especially when you have those difficult-to-deal-with inmates that want to cause problems with other inmates. It's been a great tool for the sheriff's office. It's been a great relationship with Climate County as well.
Yeah, and I see the price didn't change any?
Price hasn't changed. Sheriff Kayver's committed to keeping it at that price as long as he's in office. He's committed to keeping it at that price. We have a great working relationship. Sheriff Kayver, my department, as you know, Sheriff Kayver used to conduct our polygraphs for us, so he became sheriff. We already established that relationship, so.
Yeah, we're just running a little behind because he was so busy. It actually has been in effect since July 1st.
Absolutely, so this is right until July 1st. And we've been using our beds. He didn't waver from that at all, whether this was a place or not, we kept using our beds, so we're good to go.
Very good question. We can act on it tomorrow, but...
I may not be here tomorrow. I have an appointment then.
Yep.
So, depending on what time I get out of here.
I don't think there's going to be any more questions, I think. Paul should have given the value of it.
Yeah, thank you too.
So that's the only thing you had, Jake, to add to down here twice, is addition, is that, so that's it?
That's it.
They're both the same thing?
Yeah.
Okay, so Mark that off there. Thank you very much.
I don't see them running twice.
Up on additions?
Oh, okay, all right.
You might not have updated. All right, Mr. Kessler's not here. First Amendment OHA agreement, Title 10, funding.
I need a department head for a document.
That is... Anybody going to speak on that? First Amendment, Oregon Health Authority, 1921, our government agreement for financing public health services.
So Judy Clark brought that to me last week. The state has provided reproductive services, funding in the past. They will no longer be providing that money, so now it's coming from the federal government for public health to provide reproductive health services. Same amount of money, it's just coming from a different source.
Okay, and so the, so it's the First Amendment, and it's been ran by legal counsel?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, questions?
It's basically just the state's not willing to do its job, so the federal government is doing it.
I thought you might mention that. All right. Right away, easement, new son is, anybody here, or anybody going to come on that or anything either?
No. So...
This is the one that we carried forward, we'd already had some discussion.
Yeah, that's the one we tabled last meeting, and I had the language revised to take out of the consideration, and so that's been cleaned up, and it's the Cruz solar easement. It's 1.5 miles that runs along Cruz Road.
Okay.
And Kevin, our road superintendent, has approved it, and legal counsel said it's...
So the road had no problem with it after it'd been revised, and legal counsel signed the revision. All right, so that's backed on tomorrow also.
Question, right?
Yes?
When are the representatives from state government?
Okay, the representative and the senator will be doing a town hall at 6 o'clock tonight down in the Memorial Hall, and then tomorrow they will be doing a presentation and update on the legislative session and the short session that's going to be going on tomorrow to the Board of Commissioners. And, are they're the very first thing tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, I see, they're on the fourth there, their presentation.
Yeah.
Their presentation.
Yeah, but there's a town hall tonight at 6, 6 o'clock, 6:30?
And which?
Six.
In the Memorial Hall down there. That's a great opportunity for you to have them all three at one time on their...
Just have some chew and...
Yep, question and answer.
Just perhaps I'll chew you. Well, that three will be here.
There will be Senator Lyth, Representative Reske, there'll be four actually, Vicki...
Chris Iverson.
Vicki Breeze.
Iverson.
Representative Lyth. And Representative Warner Reske. Senator Bidson sent out apology, he's been out of the country and just could not quite make this, so.
Senator Lyth, the governor as well.
Yep. So four out of the five will be at the town hall tonight, unless anybody's heard anything different.
That's at 6, excuse me?
Yep, 6, yep.
That's the ones I want to see.
You mean we're just not high enough up the totem pole, Ray?
I think that's about size of it. You guys can't help it, I've always asked, I already asked you.
All right, well, good luck with them tonight, Ray.
Well, I tell you what, there's going to be some, my license didn't expire until 26. And I'm going to ask the governor to reinstate them.
Well, good luck with them.
The young people won't help me. They won't send me this form, they say I need that surprise. She lied to me and then she...
Well, good luck. I'll probably see you there as 9:06.
Yeah.
All right.
Take care.
Yeah. So looking, hey, Brett?
Yeah.
Do you want me to see if Caitlin's available?
Yeah.
Talk about services like...
Absolutely, I would, I just getting ready to look back through the thing here.
Okay, thanks.
Was there, I know there are probably swamped today coming back from the holiday, too.
Oh, here's Cam.
Nope, on her way.
Hi there, I'm sorry, gentlemen, I didn't know I was needed this morning.
Oh, no, we've all been, had a very busy weekend, so we're just...
Are you ready for me to come to the hospital?
Absolutely, Caitlin, I'm ready.
I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine.
So what I have for you today, we want to get a signature from Charlie, the CEO, for the hospital, on a memorandum of understanding for us to move forward in working out how I, how will we be able to partner for the EvoCA and CFA grant, which is what I talked with you guys about last time I was here. So thank you Commissioner Albertson for coming in at the last minute on Friday to get the signature, I appreciate that, and I apologize, it was last minute, it was, one of those things, we're all coming together at the last minute to get the grant submitted. But essentially what the MOU states is that we are going to be working out essentially how we can partner in order to serve victims of crime with mental health care services. So we know that's a need. This, because we got such a large allocation for this grant, we had this like unbudgeted amount, and we're like, how can we use that? We talk out of both sides of our mouth of like, we need money for this rural area, and then we're like, well, we can't spend the money. So we did not want to get into that conversation with the state, so we're like, how can we spend this money and serve citizens and victims in our county? So we are working out how exactly we can under what's allowable for the EvoCA grant, but essentially it'll be around like counseling and therapy services for victims. There's also, they can, they can get into substance abuse treatment if that's part of the victimization that's been happening or occurred. So we have a lot of details to work out as far as what those mean, what that means and what the, what the Wellness and Recovery Center can provide. We have to figure out a referral process, we have to work out the, you know, confidentiality piece, we all have confidentiality rules that we have to abide by, so we just have to work some of that out. So when I come before you the next time, it'll be with a grant agreement, but along with a contract for services that will be, will be getting in place with Wellness Center. Well, I think technically the Lake Health District, but on behalf of the Longest and Recovery Center. So, any questions?
We're going to do it all on Commissioner Albertson, so. So we do need to do a ratification, and we can do that today, and so I would entertain a motion to ratify that signature. Second, motion's been made and seconded to ratify the signature for the MOU as done on Friday. Further discussion?
I just want to point out, this is a unique situation for Lake County than most other counties that have a victim's advocate, much like we do. That victim's advocate provides those services, but because we're one victim's advocate county partnering and making those services available to us, just not referral for mental health services, but as the victims are going through the court process, having someone there with them besides our victim advocate, who's, who's a subject matter expert in trauma-informed care, working with them through the trauma that they're going to be going through, sitting in trial or maybe testifying, it's a unique opportunity for Lake County. Not very many counties have this ability, so kudos to Caitlin and the Houston County's office for making this happen.
Very good, thank you Caitlin. I don't think you need any more discussion after that. All in favor? Aye, motion carries, thank you very much Caitlin.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you Jake for those comments.
To you.
All right, so we're down to timed items. One, no-show, so early, so is there any liaison updates or any updates from anybody? I don't put Melanie on the line real fast. Any updates on our parking lot, our reorganization, trying to open up this parking lot for more public use, especially on, I know we have some things on order, how are we doing?
I've called him three times and he's not called me back, so I'm a little dissatisfied. I'm hoping that the fence panels will be here this week, but I don't know. I don't, he hasn't given me a tracking number yet, and he said he's shipped it Monday, last Monday, so I'm expecting it any day, but I'm...
That's not unusual where we live for things to take while to get here.
I understand, I wish we would have had it in for the 100-foot roundup, but it'll still be nice, once we have it.
Other stuff, working through, you're working through everything from the camera to get reorganization for specific designated parking, so we opened this up for public parking, our employee parking, parking, I know, I've had it many times where I'll get hit from the public trying to open it up here for the businesses and everything, so. Melanie, I just want to commend you for working on that with the department head, selected officials. There's going to be those roller coasters of people that don't want to walk the extra 40 feet, but it'll be fine, so. I appreciate everything you're doing, so. We get to make the decisions, you get to make the work. With that, I would just like to, myself, the fair, the roundup, the derby, everything was just exceptional this weekend. The presence of our PO people, our sheriff down at the event and around, I think, was a very positive, very positive thing. Jake, thank you for some of your employees making walkthroughs and everything. I think it helped set the tone for some people that want to go sideways. I never heard of anything too bad, you know, for Labor Day weekend, but this sale for the kids and all that was just incredible this year, so. Roundup Association, Fair, everybody, kudos to them all. There's always the roller coasters up and down and emotions, but went off pretty well. And the frame, my God.
Thousands of hours of volunteer from the Fair and Roundup Association. Joseph Utley getting Christian here.
Yep.
It was pretty awesome. It was just good.
It was very good, so.
The airports resurfacing is going well. Been running into us a few places where they had to put extra rock.
Are the papers coming in, do you know, have you heard yet?
They're supposed to be in here within the next few days.
So I think, I think I've told both of you this, if not, I'm going to say it and say it again. The pit south of town is owned by General Fund. The rock there that is crushed and everything is road department, but the pit itself is ours, so whenever you're looking at these bigger projects and everything, we always go out to the private sector first for most things, but on our own properties, like if you need base rock and everything, the pit run, it might be a little bit of cost for the push-up with the cap, but we as the board have control over the rock and that and bunch grass pit, so. Just to let you know, if you have an extended runway, you have to do things out there, that's an avenue to be able to use, use that rock, you know. You have to separate from the road departments, but they're dollars into you, but there's avenues out there. And I think you both knew that, but maybe not.
If you don't, if you did, you know, you don't have... Dave was talking a little bit about that too, so.
Well, years ago, we used to charge a $10,000 a year admin for that rock and for another $10,000 for bunch grass. When the road department started, the budget got so tight, we waived that over the years.
So where's the bunch grass?
It, we haven't used it for years, it's all the way up at Northlake, the really funding corner, you know, it's just off out towards the sinks right there. But with our new, our new inline crusher, whenever it gets on, I would think it might be the type of material that might work pretty good for that. If you're, I've hauled out of it back in the day, but it's not the best rock, but it might work for them. But anyways, just want to give you guys an update, those two just logged out of way in your history as commissioners, so that's how, that's how it, that evolved over the years. But, yeah, the airport, did they get the base rock or what? I don't know the base rock or what you need, you got some extended out there.
Yeah, and they, they just had a couple soft spots where the water was still right near the surface that needed base rock, so they could put resurfacing on.
Very good.
Let's see, I wanted to update you guys, October 7th and 8th, Bob Schwartz from DEQ will be coming in to Christmas Valley, and he'll be holding a public meeting, he's making all the arrangements, and he'll be sending out an email with all those arrangements or online. He'd like to have a meeting on the evening of October 7th around 6:30, 6 o'clock, and then the following day, a site visit where the public would be welcome as well. And that'll probably be sometime after breakfast on October 8th.
You know, it's for the...
That is for the Alcoa Lake disposal site.
And he wrote, I would assume he's running his public meeting.
He is running that as a public meeting, he will be putting ads in the papers.
Probably the community center at Christmas Valley.
Community center, most likely, that is where he is attempting to make the arrangements.
Very good.
So just to kind of keep you guys updated, so it's on your radar. I think, I think the public would like to see us there. If not all of us can make it, is what it is. The site visit should be kind of interesting though as well, and that's open to the public, so. And that'll be advertised well in advance, so we can go out there and take a look if so desired. He will also be joined by Tracy England, who will be taking over, I guess, at some point in time for him. He's out of band.
That'd be great to make that connection. I know you're sort of lead on this, have taken some passion for it, but if any of us can make that connection with upcoming DEQ person, that'd be great.
Yep, just want to make sure that's on you guys' radar, and, yeah.
Okay, so I need to give you guys an update on the railroad to Chrissy Ground. Thank you guys so much for giving me the leniency to talk with Dave and Ann, potential funding, as we're looking to get through the notice to proceed part of this. We don't have anything to bring to the board yet, nothing will happen without the board's support. I have set up weekly conference calls with what I call the team, Dave, Ann, and myself, the stakeholders. We had our first meeting Thursday at 8 o'clock in the morning conference call, went very well, really working on, on the Chrissy Ground, it's 5.6 million, it has right at a 50% match. The state of Oregon, our legislatures did not fund the 3.12 in the regular session. We have a very, very good shot in the short session. I've updated both of you individually, I had a great opportunity to visit with Senator Johnson and Representative McCowen, and gave some support there, so during the short session, we're going to really push on that, so that would fill a lot of that gap of that 50% match. The sooner we get this notice proceed, that's not the right word, it's the NEPA in that part, we're looking to get in a categorical exclusion because it's all maintenance right on the railroad. And so, we're trying to get quotes in so it can come before the Board of Commissioners of who are going to have to get that paperwork done. When that paperwork gets done, then any work that's going on on the Red Rock Spur, our work going on on the railroad goes towards that match, which lessons, the amount of match, I call it a soft match, some of our liabilities. So working on that, things are starting to come together pretty well. Working with Larry Holtzheim, Business Oregon, he has some questions and different things, trying to find every avenue on all that, so I will, after another week or two, hopefully have even a better update. Jeff Manternick, Red Rock's on the call, Mary Given, one of those two are always, are going to be on the call, the shippers are on the call, so.
What do you have from the Pearl Lake and Collins that are on the call?
Yes, yeah, D Brown was on the call, Bruce was in person and actually sat here on the call, and then Toby was on the call, so we're pulling together all the key players to try to have the best presentation to the board as we go forward. That's a great opportunity, it's just finding that match and making sure it's right. And then, so what we're looking to do is getting, come before the board with the cost for that, get through the NEPA process, and then we would look at going out for a full RFP for a project manager that would take and take this through the process, because of, when you're dealing with FRA and federal dollars and all this, it's, it's a lot, we have a lot of expertise here, but we need that, a project manager, and so. Just an update on that, be sure to talk to Dave, Ann, even ask me what I'm doing on the things. I'm going to be working very closely with Representative Reske on this, and he's going to be the lead, and so he has to be able to tell the story to the legislature, so. So anyways, it's a lot of extra time and work, but it's positive times. I know you spent a little bit of time with Caitlin over the weekend, I did too, and we... Caitlin from Congress Mall in his office, I'm sorry.
Caitlin Payton.
Yeah, she, we went to the Derby, had her for breakfast, then we went to the parade, and she enjoyed herself. Introduced her to quite a few people.
Don't be afraid of your microphone.
Yes, sir.
I'm hard here.
I introduced her to quite a few people, it was good to have her here, so.
Very good. All right, well, I don't think we're going to get the other two people to show up, but we do have Kathy Miles here from the Youth Mentor Program. Kathy, you might as well come up, and if you guys have other liaison stuff, we can come back to it. I don't, no, we're good.
I just want to disclose that I'm on the board of the mentors program, and so I want to disclose that, so.
Yes, and thank you for that, we do cross over on many things, we're asked to be on many different boards and many different advisories and stuff, so. With that, Kathy, welcome. I don't think I've ever seen you before.
Yeah, right. So I do have our budget that I couldn't send to Melanie because it had to be approved on Thursday, real fast, so I can give you a copy of what we're looking at, and Melanie, I'll give you one because I didn't think. You know I'm coming up from retirement?
I do now.
Yeah, so I'll give you a copy of this if you, so you can kind of follow along and see what I'm doing. I'm interim, just so you know, I'm the interim director. I was the director for seven years, and decided it was time to let someone else try to take it on, and the director quit a few weeks ago, and Jack Thompson at the ESD asked me if I'd come back on an interim basis and help out, especially considering that Rihanna, the coordinator, just had her baby on Sunday, so...
Oh, did she?
She did. And so, I'm a little bit on my own for a while, until we can get a new director hired. She did. And so I'm a little bit on my own for a while until we can get a new director hired. Um, when I came in, the first thing I looked at was the budget because.
Yes.
That's pretty important. Um, we are, James, I don't know how much you know about the program, but we are a grant funded program. And.
He's told me pretty much.
Yeah, so we, we rely on a lot of grants. And, um, we have the, I call it the Tuvinile of Crime Prevention because that's what it was when I was here, but it's now, I guess, the Oregon Early Learning Council, which is Jake, um, through his funds. And we have $27,000 as I understand it. We had a grant from the Oregon Community Foundation Trailblazers for 10,000. She, um, LeAnn Davis, she, the, uh, the director who resigned, submitted a budget or a grant to the Collins Foundation for $25,000, which we won't know about until the end of October. And, um, she did not come to the commissioners in a time, timely fashion as we have done in the past. The commissioners have supported us, I don't know how many years, Brad, you probably know that better than me right at this point. Um.
Quite, quite a few. And you're saying that, well, that you, that it's supposed to come here in budgeting time.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but, but anyways.
And that's, that's one of the things that I brought forward at our meeting is, you know, that it's way easier for us to plan if they come to us in the springtime before we budget.
Yes.
Well, I honestly, as we've supported over the years, was for it to be standalone. So I assumed when they didn't come before us is that you were in a different place than you are right now. But anyways.
Yeah.
Let's not worry about that. Let's, let's go forward.
Happened. And so that should have been done and wasn't. Um, and then we, um, are going to have to use a carryover fund. We have a contingency fund, but we're going to have to use almost half of it this year because some things weren't done. Um, and as you know, having a contingency fund is important because.
So you're calling a carryover, your contingency?
Yep.
And so you're saying you're going to have to use half of it, but if, but if the $25,000, the $5,000 comes in, then you wouldn't have to by looking at your budget here.
No.
We would use half of it, but we would still use some of it.
Yeah. Uh, we would have to use this $53,000. Unless we can do, um, under our business.
I see included that you balance with the full use of the 53, inclusion of the 33.
Correct.
I, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Jake, got a question.
Kathy, I have a question. Does your new budget reflect the additional, uh, $6,775 that's coming in from JCP funds?
Um, you told me $54,000?
Well, it's, oh, it's $54,000 for two years, $27,000 a year.
Right.
The difference from last, last biennium, each year, uh, the mentor program received $20,000, $225. This, this fiscal year, with the 27, uh, it's $27,000 each fiscal year for total of $54,000. So the difference is a positive $6,775.
It does, does reflect 27.
Yeah, it's $27,000 in the budget.
So I brought that before the board last, last meeting, two weeks ago. Um, I brought that before the board, maybe a month ago. The board had approved that.
Okay, so that's what I was.
So we're still looking for another five. You got any other?
Yeah.
General fund dollars in the Duke County Department.
The one thing I will tell you, and then our business donations and fundraising, and I'm really confident on that number of 20,000 because we go out into the community and we get, I, I would be quite shocked if we didn't get $12,000 to $15,000 in business ship, business sponsorships. Brianna, as soon as she gets back from that baby, is an amazing fundraiser. And she is going to easily be able to come up with this. We'll have some events. I'm headed to Ace Hardware right after this because Dan has agreed to, I know this might be controversial somewhere, but not in Lake County. Um, we're going to be doing a gun raffle. And Dan has agreed to work with us on that. So, um, that's already, and then we have our annual dinner, which we should bring in anywhere from $4,000 to $5,000 easily on that. And not to mention anything we do in the interim that Brianna comes up with. Um, we're working with KORB. They're going to try to do some things with us. So I'm pretty confident in the budget that I have submitted to you, along with your, uh, $5,000, if you were so gracious as to give it to us. The ESD will match that. And, um, where they do that is they take away from, um, the dues that we have to pay in administrative fee because we, while we are a part of the ESD, we're really not, in the sense that we're all grant funded, no funding comes from the ESD. They have agreed to waive, um, some of the fees that were charged for being there. So, um, we're currently the mentor program, and the reason I'm back is there have been some challenges and I'm going to make them work. I just am. That's what I do. Uh, I think the program is so important to this community. Um, our mentors numbers are down. I hope to bring that up within the next month, month and a half. Um, a little bit, I go out and I beat the bushes. And if I see you on the street, I say, would you like to be a mentor? And then I try to make you feel bad if you tell me no.
I've, I've never experienced that at all.
No, you haven't. Still so far, I haven't gotten here, but that's okay.
You're targeted now. Oh, I've been targeted for years.
And just for you to know, James, too, we are a countywide program.
Yes.
So we service Northlake with a team mentor program because we actually found Northlake does not work with one-on-one because of the vast area that people are in. And a little hesitant to be a part of a program. Um, some people, but our team mentor program in Northlake is amazing. Cindy Reed, um, Sheriff Shumway.
Yeah.
They're two of our main people working up there. I met last week with Liberty, um, Hendrix, that's her, um, in Paisley.
Yes.
Uh, she lives in Severlake, remember, but she does, she runs the Paisley program for us. And so we're also working with the high school, um, a program that I have to go find out just a little bit more about. Uh, is where we have teens going into the elementary school at breakfast, talking to kids. So I want to go find out what that is and get a little bit more on the numbers. I will be applying for a Ford Family Foundation grant. Um, and a couple others that I want to look at to get the grants back up to where we can breathe a little easier than we can this year. Um, it's a tough year. It's going to be a tough year.
So if, if this board tomorrow found, found money.
Mm-hmm.
And we were able to make this happen, would you be willing to, some of those mentors come and do presentations to us occasionally? Just so they get some experience, maybe speaking to the board and maybe that'll help them in life or something like that? Some of the kids.
Oh, you want some of the kids?
They're not the mentors, but the kids.
You want the kids?
Mentors.
Yeah, sure, I could. I do want to tell you, I'm only going to be here two months, I hope. Um, praying somebody applies for that junk. We have you.
No, that, that's great, Kathy, but you know, um.
Yes, I will pass on.
As we invest in our youth, sometimes if they just sit through a meeting or have to come up and do a little presentation.
Absolutely.
How it's been positive for them. Maybe that makes a difference in their life later on too.
Yes, and we have done that in the past with Broderian. And I will pass along one note. I was at the Derby, uh, Sunday night and turned around and here's a young lady sitting behind me who had been in the program and graduated. And she, she was one of our first. Um, she came from a home that was interesting. We'll use that word.
Yes.
And, um, she's now an assistant manager at Bank of America in Portland. And she told me, had it not been for the mentor program, she doesn't think she would have made it. So it is making positive impacts. And I would hate to see this program not work. Um, I have offered to Jack that I will also be available for some consulting. Uh, not too much because our budget's tight, but, um, that I would be willing to help whoever is hired as director. And, and we do have it advertised right now. Had to put the new advertisement out because we had the wrong salary and we were not, I mean, who wants to do this for $13 an hour? You know, that was what it was listed at. And no one really wants to be the director for $13 an hour. It's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work.
So, um, but we have it back out now and we've had, a couple people have contacted us to talk about it. And so we're hoping to draw some, it's a 40-hour a week job with benefits, as long as they keep getting grants to pay their salary.
Well, you know, that's not unusual for a lot of the nonprofits and everything. It's, it's grant driven and the director has to work really hard to get those to operate.
Yeah. So it is my goal to make sure that this program continues and that it's not just left to die. Because I think that would be one of the saddest things that would happen in this community. Because we have helped quite a few kids.
Yes.
We've had up to 30 kids on the program at one time or another. And so, um, I want to see it continue. My 80.
Yes, thank you so much, Kathy. We'll take it under consideration. Uh, we'll check on where we might deliver some funding. It's very tough whenever it gets past our budget time. You know that.
I do.
Um, this board's pretty creative. Um, we're, I'll speak for the whole board. We're very supportive of our youth in Lake County.
Yes.
I do want to say thank you for coming back and helping us in this time. Because it's been a tough spot, so.
Yeah, as long as I get to go back to that retirement, because I was kind of enjoying it.
Well, I, I know you, you do it, you do it all or nothing, so, yeah. Appreciate, I, I did old Mark says, thank you for coming back.
You're welcome. We'll make it work.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Absolute pleasure seeing you again.
Yeah, take care.
Say hi to your husband.
I will. Say hi to my uncle or my, my brother-in-law.
I will.
Hopefully he did better this weekend.
Yes.
Take care. Thanks.
Perfect timing, Mr. Testner. We, Kathy Miles just got done. Come on now.
Hey, you got 10 to 5?
Uh, there wasn't a timed item.
Okay.
So, or do you have other people come? Do you want to meet 10 o'clock?
No, no. I just thought if it was packed at 10, then we should keep it at 10.
No, no, there was no time. We only had two timed items, so.
Okay. Uh, Septic is, uh, Clam- uh, Clameth Lake Community Action Service, and they're reorganizing. And they should have had before this time, but they didn't. A tripartite board of directors, meaning a group on underserved low, low income folks, a person on board from, uh, an elected official, and another group of general business. And we don't, the board of directors does not have anybody from the elected, uh, position. And they ask if Lake County would be interested in either one of you gentlemen, or to name a representative to, to assign. It's required by the, uh, uh, Community Service Block Grant Better Funds to have a tripartite board of directors. So that's the request is if one of you guys want to be on the board of directors or appoint somebody, add to your representative.
Okay, so I haven't seen their bylaws. You'd say it's a community service block grant requirement?
Yes.
Didn't they, didn't they mention that when they were here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I was in touch with Christina just last night. I sent an email off to her with recommendation from our legal counsel in regards to, uh, signing on some of those things. But, uh, they do have a tripartite board. And that board requires up to one-third of it needs to be an elected official. Um, has to be on that board. Either one or two elected officials. One could be from Clameth, one could be from Lake, um, up to one-third of the board. Though I believe there are six positions.
Yeah. And it could be from, well, it says elected official. That could be town council. But the emphasis is to get a county because class covers the whole county and not just the county of Lake City.
Yeah, I, um, I know James has been doing quite a bit of work. You as an elected, um, member of the hospital board, you would fit, fit part of that as a hospital representative onto the class. One of us would fit it as an elected official. Um, there are many different, uh, people throughout the county. I know I haven't visited Clameth County for a little while. Both counties are struggling with a little bit with, uh, classes come to us and said, we're responsible as a government, uh, government authority in this. So I know James has been working on it. Some of our legal counsel, uh, Donnie Boyd's been working, Commissioner Boyd's been working Clameth County. So right now, I, I don't know unless James has something to bring forward, um, something we can consider.
I, when I, when I mailed, um, I emailed, uh, Christina last night, um, my, my full response was basically that if she wanted to get together, she actually sent me an email. She wanted to get together in person. Uh, either she would come over here or I would go over there and we would try and work this out. And I got in touch with Jim Bailey, um, kind of went back and forth there a little bit, trying to figure out what would be the best course of action. And I figured once we kind of worked out what exactly is being asked, not just having a position on the tripartite board, but also, um, in signing of that document in order for them to be able to get that funding, I need to know the full liability and responsibility that our county would be taking on. And once that's made clear, not just to myself, but the rest of the board, I told Christina that I would be more than happy to either travel to Clameth, um, or anywhere needed, um, and try to find a solution for this. And then I would be willing to call for a special session if necessary, um, with the rest of the board. And we could find a solution from there, look at our options. So.
I, I knew that you'd been, though, in this by ways, so thank you.
There, there's, there was a lot through with, uh, I had to go through their actual grant and look for actual specifications where they require, uh, the county's, um, involvement in order to acquire their grant. And Jim Bailey and I were kind of shooting that back and forth and trying to find what exactly, their first, the first paper that was brought to us, and I believe we all saw that, it was very vague and very.
Very true.
And, and.
Raise red flags.
But yeah, and just when you see phrases like responsibility and liability.
Yeah.
Uh, onto the county, but it's not clear as to what that is. Um, and given the history that classes had, um, in, with prior directors and, and where things had gone with that, we're, they're still trying to sort through a lot of their stuff. Um, it was very, I personally had a great deal of, um, just caution, uh, kind of going through this. And I don't think that the board really felt comfortable judging from our last meeting um, at this point in time with signing onto any full agreement. Sorry, Jake had a question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have another question, just a comment. I think it's important that, um, that the county board of direct, or board of commissioners is involved. Um, with, with, with community corrections, handling the prison, and this with program. Classes struggle keeping someone full-time involved with energy assistance. And that's, and that deals with our most, um, um, oh, well, with our seniors, our most, uh, the folks that need it the most. So we, we haven't had anything steady. So trying to work with the folks on the ground in Clameth and understanding our needs over here hasn't always proven to be a, a good working relationship. Um, so having that voice to keep someone here locally involved with energy assistance is going to be huge. And that's one thing, whoever may join that board, I would ask to continue to hammer home is we need someone here on the ground doing energy assistance instead of.
Well, they, they have a job or a position open right now. Um, and so that they're working on that. My issue is, is I need to look back at whenever we completely went away from classes, board of commissioners. And Ken, you were on at the time, if I remember right, um.
The unanimous consent for dissolution of Clameth and Lake Community Action Program was signed in, in, uh, 2009. Um, by all three commissioners from Clameth, none of which are in office at this point. Um, and then all three commissioners here in Lake, um, with Dan, with Commissioner Shown, with Dan Shown, uh, yourself and, and Mr. Testner.
Yeah, and whenever we've done that, uh, there, there was, we were advised from legal counsel whenever we've done that. So as you're working with our legal counsel and everything, uh, we need to reflect on, on that and make sure that we're not going to give us the decisions made. Or if there, if we do want to go back, if we can. or if there, if we do want to go back, if we can only agree.
Evaluate.
Yeah, that's what we need to do, and so that's, that's, thank you for looking that up. I haven't read that lately, so I don't know.
No, that was ten years ago. I understand. I get it, you know? And so I, I'm, um, Melanie was actually kind enough to, to pull this up for me. And, uh, so we've been kind of going over this stuff to try and find a solution. And Class does have a position open. They actually want to eventually hire two full-time positions here in Lake County.
That'd be good, because the last, we, we've had this agreement with Class for two or three years, and during those two or three years, they probably have four or five different employees in that position. And, and the change always happens right during the middle of the winter or late fall, early winter. So we're, we're slow without, by then, sun's piled up.
Regarding energy assistance, I get, yeah, that's worth it, man.
Well, I'd be really surprised, I'd be really surprised if they have the funds, if they really look at the budget, but two people in Lake County.
That, they'll probably start with one.
Yeah, because of, over the years, just getting energy assistance here, there wasn't even enough administrative dollars to get it on the ground hardly at all. I'm talking several years ago, so it may have changed today. But it usually complements our senior center really well, and maybe, maybe the way working with our senior center where they do some administrative work or something. Because they deal with those energy assistance things used to the lot, I don't know.
And, and in their defense, I think part of this grant that they're actually applying for, that they can't acquire some of those other funding until they have the actual county sign off on some of these things. Um, some of those funds are actually for that specific purpose.
Well, I think it's prudent for us to cautiously go forward because of there has been, uh, failure in the past. Um, we, we want the services, we want our citizens to get all the services they can. Uh, we gotta be cautious about the liability to the county at the same time as you're working.
And I think you actually stated it in one of our last meetings where you actually said, you know, we, we want to be supportive of Class, and we have been supportive of Class. But what degree of our responsibility is, that, that remains to be clarified, so.
And, and irregardless of energy assistance position here, we're still gonna be delivering. We, we see the need. We, we just, we've entered into agreements with Class in the past, and it hasn't, the relationship hasn't been good, um, because of the, the high turnover and not only hearing, and Lake people also from Clamath, and a lot of miscommunication. That's not getting the information we need, um, to deliver the firewood.
You're justifying why we're moving there cautiously.
Thank you. But we will, we will continue to deliver firewood.
That's a, one of the, one of the reasons that Class made a complete turnover in the management section.
So anyway, for consideration, and it's not just, oh, energy assistance in this many different programs I encourage you to kind of. But one of their primary funding, they'll see, is, I'm a CSB chief, and we provide the tripartee. So it's either a commissioner on it or somebody that's designated to be on it. They recommended that, since I'm already on it, I could do that designation, but that's for you guys to decide.
Thank you.
So anyway, please put it on.
Appreciate you all doing the research on it. Yeah, yeah, you good?
Thanks, Kathy.
Back to others.
All right, so, um, apparently Francine Winters is not coming today.
I'd say that's a safe assumption.
Safe assumption. Is there anything else to come before us?
What's me?
Were you, were you the only one?
Put on that hot seat, yeah.
Oh, you could, what about the word sense?
Pardon me?
I have not heard anything back. I, I, I talked to a person two weeks about that. And it appeared when, uh, the deputy came and spoke to you about your, um, emergency.
Alert sense.
Alert sense. It sounds like we are leaning towards going with diversion, and I can't remember the name of it, but the state police or in the state of Oregon is diversion, that was too expensive. I can't remember the name of it. So I haven't been enough talking about how we can support the local county with that since we're in, what kind of thing, so.
All right. Okay. Um, just a little further discussion on the mentor program, uh, between now and tomorrow. I'm assuming of your support, we need to come up with where we find that kind of money, non-budget time. Um, there's, there's places we can go. We can do a grant out of our loan program. We can look at, um, the Economic Development Video Lottery Dollars. We've been hitting it pretty hard, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to go there.
Yeah. Uh, the, you know, it's tough when they come before you, whenever it's budgeted, everything's already budgeted. My, my projections on, uh, our budget as commissioners, I don't know. I don't have a projection on that, how we're gonna come out on that. We've got some pretty major traveling, different things coming on this year. So I guess we'll get right back down to maybe the Community Development Loan Program as we, we do, as a board of commissioners, have the ability to grant some monies out of there. So that's, that's a consideration. If you guys want to talk to Ann individually, um, I would like to find a way to support them tomorrow. Just, just so you guys know where I stand.
Yeah, no, I think, I think there's a consensus.
I just kind of reluctantly being on that board, and I'm also, I'm also a mentor. I just, I wanted you guys to kind of take the lead on this one.
Okay.
Just because I'm, I'm involved so deep in, in it, I don't want it to.
Take care, but you're gonna admit you're the problem.
Well, to be honest with you, I'm really thankful, I'm really thankful that Kathy came on board and helped us out.
But, yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean anything by that because I know you're working to get it corrected and everything as a board member. You're working very hard, and I, to speak for James and me, both, we understand, we'll take the lead on it.
So what are the, uh, so what are some of the different places that we can look aside from the lottery dollars?
Uh, the Community Development Loan, it's the revolving loan program we have.
Did you mention another one, though?
Um, I just was talking about our general budget overall as the commissioners. And it might be a blend of the two if we wanted to go there. But I think our projections, we're probably right on our projections, so I'd be cautious about going there. I think, I think the place to go would be, uh, we very rarely do it but through kids. The grant card would be acceptable.
Again, the one thing I will say is there is a huge need for mentors and mentorship in our community. And, you know, to, to have some kid come alongside you, or you come alongside some kid to help them, you know, not everybody was raised with the privilege that we were raised, you know, having our folks around and, and that, and, uh, so it's really important.
Yeah, and, and also it's worth just noting, the ESD will match any funds that we award.
Yeah.
Which is, that was pretty huge. I hadn't heard of that one yet.
Yeah, and so. I, I have not been a mentor, but I've emceed dinners and done fundraisers and that part of it. We all sort of get involved at a hot level, we're able to. So, um, anyways, it's, it's a very, very good program. But I, I would like to see they judge which kids would be beneficial from the company, give us update over a year. I think, I think that's just another, they, they can judge which kids that maybe they're going to be public speakers or something, not putting pressure on the kids, but the opportunity to come speak to us.
Absolutely.
So anyways, uh, any other discussion on any of the other items? Go ahead.
Um, is this being recorded right now?
Yes, it is. Yep.
All right, well.
You wanna adjourn?
I can film for you some things that happened this weekend that I don't want it, um, I don't want it, okay?
We can adjourn.
So.
We can adjourn and show up the camera.
So it's, um.
I can just come individually.
Yeah, so it's ten o'clock. There is no further updates to the Board of Commissioners. Um, tomorrow we'll bring back the things that are necessary, and we'll adjourn at ten o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.